All right. We're being ordered seven o'clock, we'll start today. Punch the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, um, as everybody knows, Linda's not here tonight. Uh, I got news this morning, her surgery went very well. Surgeon said the results were excellent, so she's at home resting. Um, so that, uh, that's good news there. So we have, we're going to take an action minutes, but so I think Clint, Ed, and myself have just little checkboxes to keep track of who says what. Not just who said what, who motions for this and that, so just keeping track of that. So, between, so there's three of us, which means two of the three of us ought to at least get it right, so we can break the tie of who motioned for what. Okay, but that's why there's three of these things. All right, so first up on the agenda, we have a, uh, first up is visitor citizens forum at this time, any personal business before the council, not scheduled on the agenda, these people of council, council, they're not coming, they're red, it's a state event, it's authorized, they'll go and come. Okay, nobody turn in any forms, because I don't see any. All right, so we will move on. Next up is a public hearing, public hearing scheduled on proposed amendments and zoning ordinance to provide an opportunity, assistant comment, town council may adopt proposed zoning ordinance, we will not amend it in one reading. Okay, so, uh, the public hearing is open at 7:02 PM. Okay, does anyone have anything to say about the zoning ones? So we're looking at amending the zoning ordinance, making a series of minor kind of technical details based on variances, um, that we granted, some fine tuning that we're doing. Um, it doesn't affect any of these lawn sizes, uh, you know, dimensions, house sizes, none of that, it's more or less a little thing, setbacks, what's good, what's not good, inside the setbacks, it's a lot of minor things like that. We cannot vote on it, Clint, I believe we have to mail it out first.
There's the mailings, there's like forty-five days and sixty days or something like that, so it's gonna be next year.
So, um, uh, the goal tonight is to get council's unofficial approval to proceed with the mail. So we have to agree that these are the changes we're happy with, because we're not gonna mail it out unless we all are happy with it. So I'd like to move this ship along, and, uh, so that's kind of, but we're not gonna vote on anything tonight, we can't vote on it until after.
No, it's just one of those, because we have to go through the effort of the additional public hearings and the mailings, we just don't wanna get to the end and go, nah, nah, get it voted down, so make sure directionally, that's where it's, we're heading towards a yes vote.
Okay. So, any questions? All right. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All right, I have a motion from Clint at seven oh four.
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor? All right, next up, we have consideration of the audit of the sixteen seventeen fiscal year by Mr. Wayne Neighbors of Neighbors CPA Services. Wayne?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, Wayne Neighbors, Neighbors CPA Services, way in with the year. Uh, one correction there, Mayor, I believe you said sixteen seventeen fiscal year, should be seventeen eighteen. So if that's in the.
Let her write the minutes for, for the agenda.
Somebody would just make a note of that. Um, you have your auditors report there in front of you on page one and two. This is the independent auditor's report. This is actually probably the most important part of the whole document, uh, even though it has no numbers on it. The first paragraph simply states the focus, the scope of our audit was the year ended September thirty of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the next paragraph describes your responsibility to manage, you're responsible for maintaining internal controls and designing your financial statements to be free of material misstatements. Our responsibility is to plan and perform our audit in conjunction with generally accepted auditing standards in the United States and to express an opinion based on our findings to obtain a reasonable but not absolute assurance that the material, the financial statements are not materially misstated. And then the opinion paragraph simply states, in my opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly non-material respects, so you have a clean audit. Uh, move over to page fifteen. That's good, I like that. Uh, move over to page fifteen. I'm gonna go over a few highlights, some things that are probably the most important things for you to, to know about and keep in mind as we're going through the audit. And then if you have any detailed questions after we're finished, then I'm, I'm happy to answer any and all questions that you have. Um, this is your balance sheet on page fifteen, and your general fund, your governmental funds, general fund and your MDD. The things that we look for in your, on your balance sheet are, one, your, what's called a current ratio. The current ratio simply describes the ratio between current assets and current liabilities, which describes liquidity and your ability to pay your bills that you've got coming up in the next twelve months. We like to see at least a one to one ratio there, so at least as much cash in the bank as you've got bills coming up in the next twelve months. You have thirty-one to one. So you're very strong cash position in your general fund. The second thing we look at is fund balance reserve. And what this represents is money that you have on hand in case, you know, it's tough to collect taxes when you're, you know, you're just running behind or, or for some reason that there's some problems with assessment, so on and so forth, and you end up having to be delayed on your collections. We recommend in the general fund that you maintain a twenty-five percent fund balance reserve. Twenty-five percent represents twenty-five percent of your total annual expenditures, okay? So on page seventeen, about, oh, two-thirds away down the page, under expenditures, you see total expenditures of four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. We take the debt service principal payments out of that amount. That gives you a operating expenditures of two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. That's what we base your reserve ratio, your reserve percentage on. And based on that, you have sixty-nine percent reserve in your general fund. So you're considerably above the required twenty-five percent or recommended twenty-five percent. If you flip over to page nineteen, just a couple of things to be aware of here, you were, you were over budget on revenues and you were over budget on expenditures for the year, but overall, the net variance was positive by fourteen thousand dollars. So that's a, that's good performance on your budget. You really, you really stayed the course on your expenses and you increased your revenues above budget. So that, that was a very good performance indicator. On page twenty, statement of net position is really just a balance sheet again. This is of your proprietary funds or your water and sewer fund. What we look for here at the end is a current ratio and reserves. Current ratio, again, we expect at least one to one. Your current assets, your current liabilities are two point three to one in your water and sewer fund. So still a very strong liquidity indicator. Your reserves are not quite where they need to be, but you've come up six percent since last year. Your reserves are about twenty-six percent of this year. Two years ago, you were at eighteen percent. So that's a very strong increase in the last two years. If your performance indicators, your performance measurements are the same or equal, equal to or greater than they are this year, next year, then you'll be right in that thirty-three percent reserve, which is what's recommended. On page twenty-one, this is basically your income statement for your water and sewer fund. Just wanna point out that your revenues were up about six percent year over year and your expenses were down four percent year over year. So you had a debt positive variance of about ten percent in your operating, uh, operations of your water and sewer fund. Let's go over to page twenty-nine. And really what you even know here is there are certain things in your fund balance that are able to use to pay bills with, to pay expenses with, and cer- certain things that are not. You have restricted accounts that can only be used for certain purposes, your municipal debt, development district, your debt service, those are both restricted. And then you've got what are called assigned balances, about ten thousand dollars for road maintenance. That's not something that's restricted. You have control over that, but you have assigned it as a governmental unit. So that means you earmark that for road maintenance. Now, if you decide that you don't need that for road maintenance and you wanna use it for something else, you certainly have the power and the ability to do that. You just have to, have to vote on it among yourselves, it doesn't require any legal or ordinance action. And then the unassigned or the totally unrestricted portion is two hundred and three thousand dollars. The last thing I want to cover is, I gave you a separate report there, little two-page report, this is called my management report to you. As part of the audit, we look at qualitative measures as well as quantitative measures. We look at internal controls, we don't audit your internal controls, but we look at internal controls. Uh, we look at segregation of duties, we look at cash handling, we look at document handling, we look at organizational, uh, ability, we look to make sure that when we ask for a document, is it given to us in a timely manner, or do you have to search for it? Do we have to ask for things over and over again? Are we given what we need the first time? Are there any disagreements while going through the audit? Are all of the adjustments made timely? Those sorts of things are all looked at. And you'll be happy to know we didn't have any, uh, problems in any of those areas. Everything was given to us in a timely manner. Everything was accurate. Everything tied back to your financial statements and your financial software. Your system reports are very, very close to your, your, um, financial software. Those kinds of things are always off a little bit. Don't ask me why, but software companies can't seem to get it right. But, um, overall, a very, very good audit, uh, no, no significant findings. I'm sure as soon as Linda returns, she'll, uh, she'll get all the adjusting entries made, she always does, and she will, uh, certainly ask me if she has any questions. That's all I have officially. If you would like to ask me any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them for you. More?
Um, can you briefly describe your, this, the SKE requirement that we?
Skills, knowledge, and experience?
Yeah.
We're required for governmental entities to assess whether management, uh, has the necessary skills, knowledge, and experience to, to manage the audit process so that we can remain independent. If we're having to teach management how to do accounting, if we're having to show, uh, the management how to maintain documentation and how to record general entries and things of that nature, then we can't be independent in our examination, because then we're basically auditing our own work. So, a couple of years ago, the National County Standards Board started to require auditors to, uh, keep documentation on the skill and knowledge and experience levels of management for governmental entities. And so we have to document that as part of our work papers, part of our files. And it's looked at when we have our peer reviews, uh, because if they are not satisfied with the reasons that we give that, that satisfy the SKE findings, then they could disqualify the audit. You're very fortunate, um, to have someone as knowledgeable and experienced as the mayor and Linda, um, and Summer, she has been here for quite a number of years now. The books are very well kept, uh, they're, everything is reconciled, um, there were really no, um, hints of anything, of any wrongdoing. We always question about whether there's any indicators of fraud, uh, there were none. Your, your separation of duties or segregation of duties are strong. The mayor and Linda both do different parts, different things, um, managing financial statements. So you've got good, strong controls, uh, you're one of the few towns that actually has an ordinance, uh, written or a policy written on your internal controls. And I have a copy of that. So it helps me tremendously when I put my report together for my peer reviewer, to have those sorts of things, because it strengthens the assessment that I make with regard to SKE. So that's, that's.
Very good. The only thing I would bring up on, um, on a couple of the number, if you read the, the MDDA at the front, major discussion, there's a paragraph which explains some of the stuff. But one of the issues that we have, which is a little bit ironic, is that when you look at, say, we were over budget by, you know, ten thousand dollars on certain line, the problem we had this year was we had insurance claims. So like when our roof got haled, like everybody else, we got a check for thirty thousand dollars and we spent thirty thousand dollars to fix the roof. But they both go into, against the budget, so it's like, well, our revenues were up by thirty thousand, more than the plan, and expenses were up by thirty thou- we really weren't over, it was an offset. But when you look at the real, so for instance, in the utility fund, we again have insured, we had lightning take out three of our pumps. So the good news is it's fully insured. So we get a check for twenty-five thousand dollars from the insurance company, then we turn around and spend twenty-six thousand on pumps. We have found our way back. So our budget was perfect. When the budget is right, it's just, if you take these, these two things out, we're on the money. So that's some of our issues we have, they're very minor, they're just one-off issues. And that's why, um, when you look at some of these things, it's frustrating when I look at some of the numbers, because we're not gonna budget them in for something that's washing, it's a wash. But, um, other than that, does anybody, anybody have any questions for Wayne?
Appreciate you, I appreciate you to be here.
All right, Wayne, well, I appreciate it.
As usual.
Thank you.
As I say every year, if you think of something later, I know this is riveting and, you know, so you might want to pick it up and read it, but if not, don't worry about it. If you have any questions, if you ever have any questions about, about anything, I'm always happy to answer for you.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Here's Christopher said, bud.
Hold up, um, next up, we have, oh, we have discussion, we have to accept it. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Right, so I need a motion to, um, accept the audit.
Make a motion to accept the audit?
One second.
All right, so, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Clint. That's why we have to, that's why we're more.
There's three of you.
There's an unknown, he says excuse. Right? All right, next up, next up on the agenda, we have consideration of the outdoor lighting ordinance. So for the man, chance to go through, I have several, a half dozen questions on my own. Ed, that's your idea.
Well, I thought I would take maybe a few minutes, uh, to kind of go into a little bit more detail. We didn't go into a lot of detail last, last month, it was kind of an introduction sort of a thing. So, uh, at a very high level, the ordinance is about fourteen pages long, it's got fifteen sections, ten of which are what I would term operational, five of which are legal. And, uh, the, uh, the wherethes, and there are seven of them, uh, indicate the reasons why we feel it's important to have an outdoor lighting ordinance. And real quickly, I'll just go down here and, uh, mention a few of them. The one thing I do remember we talked about last time was with potentially new residential developments with the remainder of the, uh, undeveloped part of the city limit, within the city limits. We want to ensure that we have a consistent and a definitive lighting ordinance for that. Everyone knows we're adjacent to Lake Lewisville and there are wildlife conservation areas, and so this ordinance helps protect that natural wildlife. There's also, uh, the ordinance seeks to prevent light pollution, a number of different kinds of light pollution, to include glare, sky, glow, light trespass, and so forth. And then, uh, lastly, there is, um, a desire on our part to serve as a positive example for other communities that surround our town. So those are the reasons. The next section deals with, uh, definitions, and there's really only about six of them that you need to fully understand, I think, to understand the rest of the ordinance. The first one is on page two, which is color, correlated color temperature, and, uh, it's a specification for color of light emitted by a lamp, there's a, a range of different colors. And, uh, the temperature is measured in Kelvins, and in a little bit, I'll share with you in where we have noted what the Kelvin standard should be via this ordinance. The next one is fully shielded fixture. Pardon my voice. If you're riding around town currently, I doubt that, that you would find a, a fully shielded fixture, except for the nineteen or twenty lights that we recently installed or had Coserv install for the bar lights. I, I know I don't have one light in my house that is fully shielded. And fully shielded just simply means that the fixture is constructed in such a way that the light is projected downward. There's no light escaping above a ninety-degree, uh, angle, I guess, if you will, above the fixture. And obviously, the intent there is to keep the light from going up and, uh, to enable us to protect the night sky. Then on page three, uh, lumens, initial lamp lumens, is the number of lumens of light emitted by a lamp, uh, when new and not counting depreciation due to age of the lamp. So that basically is another way of, it's measuring, measuring the brightness of the light. And the, uh, the ordinance sets, uh, some thresholds for, uh, number of lumens as well. And then further down on page three, light trespass is also an important element of this. It's, uh, defined as unwanted light falling on public or private property from any location external to that property. So it requires, uh, all property owners to keep the lighting on their property, on their property and not being extended to, uh, any of their neighbors. On page four, we talked earlier about, uh, fully shielded, there's also partially shielded. And that is, um, determined to be, it's the same concept, except that it allows ten percent of the, the brightness of the light to be extended above the ninety-degree angle, if you will. It's not preferred, but, uh, it, it does give everyone a little bit more, uh, choice, if you will, in terms of the lights that they may put on their property. Then, uh, on page five, the key there is unshielded, which I've already mentioned. Unshielded means there's, there's, the light is just thrown wherever. The, the best example of an unshielded light are the streetlights in the shores. I mean, they're, they're, they're bulbs that have absolutely no protection as far as preventing the light from escaping up toward the sky. So the next section is the general section, there's a couple of things that I think are important here. First being A, which says that all new replacement, private-public lighting installed after the date of the effect of this ordinance shall comply with this, with its provisions, with the ordinance's provisions. And in following that, uh, the town, meaning the town, uh, government, if you will, shall change and install all new public outdoor lighting, uh, within a city, rights away and on city-owned property to meet the requirements of this ordinance as luminaires or lights expire, as fixtures expire. And then the third, which is also very important, is, uh, any new lighting, including street lighting, shall make use of timers, dimmers, motion sensors, and other adaptive controls, and shall be substantially dimmed or extinguished, uh, by eleven PM every evening unless safety concerns demand otherwise.
That's public lighting.
Public lighting, yes.
Or private lighting.
I'm sorry, yeah, it is private.
So that's, we've got the leaders here.
Okay, and so, uh, the last important item in this section is G, which is an attachment. A, which is at the very last page of the ordinance draft, and it gives, uh, examples of acceptable and unacceptable or not compliant and compliant types of fixtures. So it's a, it's a nice reference, uh, because there's thousands of different types of lights out there, and these would highlight, uh, a lot of them. So it's a nice little reference for everyone. So then the next section talks about existing light fixtures, uh, and it defines situations of destruction, major additions, and vacant structures for, uh, what would need to be done as far as replacement lighting. I won't go into a lot of detail, but that basically is what the purpose of that section is. And section four is.
But I think you have to be clear, you can't make somebody replace their lights. You can't take functioning lights and make them replace, it has to be when they wear out.
Well, according to the ordinance as it stands, everyone has ten years. But, no, we can't force people to change, but at, as lights expire and quit working and they're replaced.
Right, right.
They should be replaced with, uh, the right types of.
Yes, yes, right, yeah. You can't legally, if it's, if it's, if it's a legal light and it's working.
Yes.
You can't make, that's a take this, you can't make somebody take something legal and replace it. It has to be when it's expired.
Or ten years.
When it's dead.
Or ten years.
I don't think you can do the ten years, I think it has to be when it expires.
Well, it's not, um, not as it's written now.
No, I, I know what I'm talking about. I think we have to ask Andy.
Okay, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, Andy has not seen this yet.
And I think that's the next step.
Yeah.
Does the IVA, do they have, uh, do you have to put some sort of like?
A requirement.
A requirement timeline that every, everybody has to be compliant?
Yes.
I thought that.
They do.
A larger city could probably do that, but we're, we're bound by local government, so it's just not something we can really.
Yeah, but they do have that requirement.
Is there a penalty?
There are penalties, and we can get to that later on. It's in the, excuse me, my, which one am I? In the last section. Is that all you had, Mark?
Well, we'll, we'll keep going.
Oh, okay.
I think that's.
Yeah, I think we had.
Some of the agenda items, we're gonna talk. I think that's, some of the agenda items, we're gonna talk a little bit about what is a taking and what is not a taking. There's a lot of litigation on when you, something that's illegal and you take it away from somebody...
Yeah.
That, that's a problem in Texas.
Okay, that's great. And if anyone has any questions about any, you know, any particular section, I'm kind of giving a highly overview, please, you know... Okay, section four, I'm sorry, there's a lot of houses that have spotlights that illuminate the house angles, et cetera. How does that fall within, particularly since those lights are facing up?
Yeah, it's called uplighting. And in those situations where the, the lights are under overhangs, where it doesn't extend above the overhangs, those are acceptable.
Makes sense. Okay, thanks. Yeah, no problem.
So I see you've got the greater than less than signs now then?
Yes, yes, I...
Is that, did that, or you did that?
I forgot my, what was that, trig? It was above algebra, I think, I, it's been a long time. Anyway, here are the standards on item C, section four, that we talked about the Kelvins as far as the correlated color temperature. The threshold is no more than three thousand Kelvins. And then as far as lumens, to be fully shielded, anything equal to or greater than fifteen hundred lumens would be required to be fully shielded. Anything greater than or equal to eight hundred but less than fifteen hundred would require to be partially shielded. And anything less than or equal to eight hundred lumens would not require any shielding at all. So generally, for example, walkway lights, you know, the little things like that, they don't require, so, I mean, eight hundred lumens, I don't know if I could, I probably can't very quickly equate it to a light bulb, but there are a lot of lights, let me just say, that are less than eight hundred lumens. Okay? And then secondly, in this section, it also restricts light trespass, and we talked a little bit about that, and the glare from adjacent properties. And then, we talked about the barn lights. Barn lights are not, people, barn lights can exist. The other requirement according to the way that the ordinance is written is that they need to have an opaque reflector because again, there's nothing on that barn light that, it's probably minimumally shielded just because the fixture is on top, below, you know, the tin top, but for the most part, the light is extended above the fixture itself. So it just has to have a, a reflector on it so that it doesn't reflect light upward.
I have a question about I.
Okay.